Away from starting, we might start just a couple of minutes early, actually. That's all right. But before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Jeff Watson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we are very thankful for this holiday that we celebrate this week. We're thankful for all of the gifts that you've blessed our community with. We ask that you be with all those that be traveling this holiday season and keep them safe and watch over them, Lord. We ask that you continue to be with those that suffer with illness and continue to provide healing for them and comfort. Lord, we are asked that you be with us tonight as we do the work at this council meeting for the citizens, and ask that you please guide us in our deliberations. Lord, as always, we give thanks for your love and your grace and for the forgiveness of our sins, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Again, welcome to this regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, and we'll start things off by asking the city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Kevin Flores.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Mark Fujirus.
Here.
Ernest Kay.
Here.
All right. Thank you. And I'm gonna, we're gonna start off tonight with a recognition. I'd like to ask Chief Irwin to meet me. Chief, I'll come up there and meet you up at the podium. Well, we've, as you all know by now, that certainly we've had a, Chief Irwin announced his retirement effective next Tuesday, I think, right? November 30th, and he has done such an outstanding job for the city of Springdale and for the Springdale Fire Department. It's been eight years?
Nine and a half.
Nine and a half years. Wow. Time flies. But I tell you, he was just the right person for the job, and we're so thankful of the time he got to spend here, and you're not leaving us. You're staying in the area and you're just retiring.
That's right.
Okay. Well, nothing wrong with that. As I get closer, there's really nothing wrong with that at all. But anyway, Mike, I just want to personally thank you for your work, for what you've meant to, not only to our department, but to our city and to our organization as a city. You have brought a level of professionalism that we were sorely needing, and you have demonstrated that and really brought our department up to another level. And so, thank you for that. With that, I want to present you with this little paperweight, I guess. Anyway, we have a local artist that has a, he's a glass artist, and he does those, and we certainly wanted you to have that, and we would like for you to certainly address the council and the citizens of Springdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first off, I'd like to thank the mayor and really the city council for giving me the opportunity. This was a wonderful experience. There were challenges along the way, but certainly the city of Springdale has some top-notch talent in their fire department, and I think it was evident that the fact that we have the new chief sitting over here that will take my place on December the 1st. So, I want to thank my wife. Certainly, we came here because she said, "We gotta get closer to grandkids," and we did. But now we get to spend even more time with the grandkids, and I certainly thank that opportunity as well. Council, thank you for supporting us all these years. Certainly, it was wonderful to work with you. I know we asked for a lot, and most of the time you guys were really good, but we tried to do the best we could with making sure that we were giving you accurate information. And to the citizens for the support that they've given us, two bond issues that passed and allowed us to build several stations, some of the nicest in what I would classify in the country. And certainly, it's good for our individuals that work for us every day and do their utmost best, and certainly I wish them the best in the future. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for recognizing your wife, Janet. Listen, I know that you're as affected as he is with his job, and thank you for your support and all the support you've been to him through this, through his career. Before I sit down, I'm gonna ask, I didn't ask you, Blake, if, or tell you I was gonna do this, but why don't you come on up? I want the people in, people who might be watching to put a face with the name for our new fire chief. Blake Holt was chosen to lead our department, and Blake, you've been with the department a long time. I know you're gonna do a great job, and you've got some great people around you, and so we look forward to seeing you lead the department in the future. Anything you'd like to say, Blake? No? All right. He's who you want. All right. Thank you, Blake. Thank you very much. We are now at item six on the agenda, and I'm gonna turn, actually, the next three items over to our city attorney, Ernest Kay. Ernest?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is a public hearing on a proposed simultaneous detachment and annexation of land between the city of Springdale and the city of Cave Springs. Can you see in the screen the letter? Okay, good. City of Springdale received a letter from, and an ordinance from the city of Cave Springs asking that certain parcels of land be de-annexed from the, that are currently located in the city of Springdale, that they be de-annexed from Springdale and annexed into Cave Springs. Cave Springs has passed this ordinance, which is their part, and the statute on this requires the city where the property is currently located to conduct a public hearing, which is why we're doing this. But I want to give a little history on these parcels before I open it up for public comment. I know the property owner's here, and his attorney wished to comment, but, and I'm doing this to help. I know it's in our packet, but I wanted everyone in the room to be able to see this as well. This is, the green area is the current city limits of the city of Springdale, and I've written numbers one through seven on seven different parcels, and I'm gonna go back to explain a little bit. By reference, the red line is Highway 112. Wagon Wheel Road runs between Parcels 4 and 6 and 5 and 7, just to give you an idea of where we're talking about. So, the green area are, is the current Springdale city limits. So, if we go back, I wanted to make you aware that at one time, I believe it was in 2019, none of these seven parcels were in the city limits of Springdale. Parcels 4, 5, 6, and 7 were actually located in Benton County, and Parcels 1, 2, and 3 were located in Cave Springs. Property owners contacted the city about wanting to get the properties annexed into the city of Springdale, which, since these parcels were located, part of them were located in Benton County, and part of them were located in Cave Springs, required two separate actions to get all those annexed into the city of Springdale. The first one involved Parcels 4, 5, 6, and 7. They annexed from Benton County into the city limits of Springdale. Then, that was in 2019, I believe, and then last year in 2020, the city of Springdale requested that Cave Springs allow, Springdale annexed Parcels 1, 2, and 3 from Cave Springs into Springdale, which Cave Springs agreed to. I believe that was in January of 2020. So, if we go back to what, now this shows the request that is being made by the city of Cave Springs. All the hatched area are the parcels that they're asking be de-annexed from Springdale into Cave Springs. And the reason I highlighted, which really is Parcels 4 and 5, the reason I highlighted those in yellow was just to show the four parcels in yellow were the ones that were annexed from the county into the city of Springdale, and only two of those are being sought to be de-annexed from Springdale into Cave Springs. The northern three parcels would basically return those three parcels from Springdale back to Cave Springs. Just as another note, at the time that those seven were annexed from the county into the city of Springdale and from Cave Springs into the city of Springdale, they were owned by individuals. They since, the property has since changed hands. It's my understanding that it is the same owner that owns all the parcels that are proposed to be de-annexed from Springdale into Cave Springs, which basically is everything north of Wagon Wheel Road. So, by way of, and then we do know that there are some planned improvements to Highway 112 by the Arkansas Department of Transportation, and the city reached out to the Department of Transportation to see what their, what their plans were for this intersection of Highway 112 and Wagon Wheel Road, and this is what they sent. So, that's why that's in your packet, too, just to give you an idea, and it would be basically the northeast corner of this intersection would be the property that we're referring to tonight. So, does anyone have any questions before I open it up for comment, or did I overexplain that? So, it's, since this is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to address the council is welcome to come to the podium and address the council. And as I mentioned, the statute requires, kind of an interesting statute, because it requires us to hold the public hearing, but it required Cave Springs to publish notice of the public hearing. It's kind of backwards, but that's what the statute says. So, is there anyone that wishes to address the council? Yes, sir.
My name is Alex Blass. I represent the property owner of the discussion here this evening. We did purchase this property in February, shortly after the annexation took place. Since then, we've been working on a design and concept on this project. We've been working with Patsy, with city of Springdale, as we assembled more property within the site. We're part of the, so some of the land that we have that's not listed in the highlighted area is the land from my viewpoint to the right of Parcels 2, 3, and 5, or to the east. We have that property as well. And what we are, what we discovered as part of our design on this site was that the area that we're looking at developing currently falls within several jurisdictions, and until we get everything into one jurisdiction, we've been kind of put in a hold status on what we're looking at doing. I'm the president of Blue Ribbon Industries. We, our office is in the pinnacle area of Rogers. One of our offshoots that we're looking at doing out here is called Blue Ribbon Farms, and it's looking to serve as a, initially as a wholesale nursery and a tree farm operation for us, as well as storing some bulk material that we'd be using ourselves as well, as well as selling to the public and other landscape nurseries in the region. And so, that's kind of, we've been looking for property in this area, came across this, and kind of been working on trying to get the site ready to go where we've been kind of in this spot that we're in right now. So, when we started with Springdale, then we ended up finding out about the needing to assemble all this property into one jurisdiction. We then went to the city of Cave Springs to talk to them about the property that we have that's in the Cave Springs city limits, and upon further discussions with them, we kind of learned from the community as well as the city of Cave Springs officials that people have kind of always thought of this area, in particular, that corn maze that's been on this site probably 14 years previously, as part of the area, more of Cave Springs than the area of Springdale. And when you really look at it from a zoning map, all the property to the north, all the property to the west, and majority of the land to the east is in the, is within the community of Cave Springs. I think on the second drawing you had it, shows it a little easier. You can kind of see it. Yeah, basically, all the dark gray is the Cave Springs city limits. And so, we, and talking with people in the community and the city of Cave Springs, they felt like, you know, this area belonged more within the city of Cave Springs than it did Springdale, and at the end of the day, we're just wanting to develop this as a site for our own business to grow and to expand in the community. So, after talking with Cave Springs, we thought it was best to look at annexing the Springdale property into Cave Springs, and then also, while we've been having these discussions, RDOT released the latest design rendering that has the roundabout, and it's not shown on this drawing, but there's also a roundabout on the north end of Cave Springs. And so, another thing in discussion with Mayor Noblet is that roundabout is going to feel like the new entrance or the gateway into the city of Cave Springs on the north and south ends of the city of Cave Springs along Highway 112. And so, that's another kind of additional point that you'll come past, more than likely, a sign or something within the center of the roundabout that says, "Welcome to Cave Springs," and then you'd be driving into Springdale property currently as it's proposed. Another big thing that we're looking at is just from a, hopefully, it's one of those things you never hope it happens, but from an emergency service perspective, the city of Cave Springs is, and this is from my Apple Maps, so it's not gonna be exactly perfect, but the Cave Springs Police Department and Fire Department are both approximately four minutes away in the event of an emergency. And from what I could find, again, from my own research, the closest Springdale Police Department, I believe, is 18 minutes away, and I think that's the downtown Police Department that we found, and then the closest Fire Department, I believe, is Station 4, which is 14 minutes away. And then also, in talking with Mayor Noblet and the city officials of Cave Springs, it's my understanding that the closest Fire Department to this site within Springdale also doesn't have ambulatory service, so it'd be potentially a further travel time in the event of an emergency. But that's, that's just an additional point of kind of something that was brought to our attention. But we love the city of Springdale, we love the city of Cave Springs, we're just looking to getting the project all into, rolled up into one jurisdiction so we can move forward with our project. And then just one point, just to add it in there, if it came down to the city of Springdale was looking to have something held on to within the city jurisdictions from a tax basis and just long-term growth, the hard corner where the roundabout is being shown, that area and that region, you know, you can see in that picture pretty good. We don't have any development plans currently with that site. We're planning on holding it to be a future commercial development, and so that's not in our wheelhouse for an immediate, something that we're looking to do that we would need to get into it, you know, all into one jurisdiction, and it'd be a separate project. So, something we would be open to is carving out that corner area to be a commercial lot that stays within the city of Springdale. But that's all I've got. Thank you.
I might say something just in clarification. Just as a point of clarification, you, since you did your research, the, I think, I think the Police Department, where the location of the Police Department's not really irrelevant because, because police, they don't respond from their department. They respond, they're out in the community, so they respond that way. So, but your point with the Fire Department, I think, is well-taken. Blake, do you wanna, or Blake leave? Chief, about the ambulatory, you might, you might just mention what we, what we do do from Station 7.
Yeah, actually, that would probably be a pretty quick response for Station 9, which is out off of Downham Road. We don't have an ambulance there, but all of the individuals at the station are trained to at least the EMT level and possibly even paramedic, depending on who's staffing for that day, and they have all the equipment to render care until the ambulance gets there, which does come from Station 4.
And Downham Road is probably, that Station 9 is probably a couple of miles, maybe three.
Yeah, I can't imagine that that's over probably a three or four-minute response time.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to comment on this? Just to, just to make the council aware, the statute requires you to hold a public hearing, but that's it. It doesn't require you to take any action unless you wish to do so.
So, Ernest, I couldn't tell from that presentation or from the documents provided to us, who is the owner? Is it Blue Ribbons? Blue Ribbon, who is the owner of this property?
Do I need to go back up here? I got a lot for it. Yeah, well, we, we're on, we're on, we're being livestreamed, too, so it might could be better.
You mean now or when it was annexed?
Now, now.
Yeah.
So, the property is owned by Falcon Creek Farms, but it's another entity of ours that has a long-term lease on the property to Blue Ribbon Farms. Falcon Creek Farms owns some property in central Arkansas, and so that was used as an initial entity. And that, and just from a full clarification, that would be on this drawing, the first two parcels right now, the other ones in the middle, we do have, we've not closed on and scheduled to close at the end of this month, or actually, December 2nd. So, but we do have control over it from a contract perspective, and then we have a release from the current property owner on us moving forward on consolidating it in this annexation, de-annexation.
Ernest, can you go back to the, that one?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, Alex, how much of, how much of the property you're gonna ultimately control is in Cave Springs currently? How far east do you go?
I don't have the exact square footage off the top of my head, but it would be a land.
Would it line up with those parcel lines?
Yes, it would be, so 2 and 3 going to the east to the next line.
Okay. That's all that's in Cave Springs right now?
Yes, sir.
What about south, what about south, what about directly east of Parcel 5?
That is in Benton County.
That's still in the county?
Yes, sir.
Are we not, are we leaving an island there?
What we're looking at doing is, it's kind of like how there had to be two separate annexations of this property into Springdale. If things were to go favorably towards this being annexed into Cave Springs, we would then be moving forward with Benton County on annexing the Benton County property into, into the Cave Springs jurisdiction.
Answer your question. There is a, there is an island out that way that is in Benton County. It's not, the extent of it's not shown on this map, but there is a, an island. I don't know, I don't know how much of it bounds Cave Springs and how much of it bounds Springdale, but there is an island out there now that's in the county.
This would change that, though, likely.
If, if their request would be to annex what's on this map, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 into Cave Springs, and 6 and 7 south of Wagon Wheel would remain in Springdale.
Yes, that's a separate property, or I believe that's two separate property owners. And the land just to the east of 7 is a separate property owner. I believe it's listed for sale, but it's, that would be coming, you know, would continue to be an island in Benton County currently.
When it, when it, before, I believe 1, 4, and 6 were owned by the same person, and I think 2, 3, 5, and 7 were owned by the same person before, two different people.
Looks like pretty well everything north of 4 and 5 is in the floodplain.
Yes, that is accurate, and I can tell you after the rain in April that it's probably even more than, more than we realized. Of course, that was considered a thousand-year event by some standards, but.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Public hearing, and we'll move on to the.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, which is a public hearing on a petition to vacate a portion of utilities in the Worth Lane Commercial Park subdivision. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on that item? All right. And then we'll move on to the next one, which I believe is why most folks are here tonight, is a public hearing on a proposed annexation of surrounding lands pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 14-40 to 501 at SEC. And Luis, I think it's page, I want to make sure everyone's looking at the same thing. I believe it's page 36 in the packet is the map that we're talking about. I want everyone to be able to see it while we're visiting. It weighs down there. I think it's 30, 35 or 36. I guess I could have clicked through it. It's next. Keep going. You're almost there.
There we go.
Right there. Yep. So, this is, the city council passed an ordinance back, I believe, at the meeting, in first meeting in October, setting this public hearing on annexing this surrounded land, which is completely surrounded by the city of Springdale and the city of Fayetteville. And the way the statute reads, the city with the greater area surrounding the surrounded land has the authority to consider annexing the property into the city of Springdale. Notices, notice of the public hearing was published in the newspapers required by the statute, and letters were sent via certified mail to each of the property owners. There's 56 separate parcels involved, and this was actually brought to us by the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission with so much development going on in this area. We actually did some other annexations out in the vicinity, the roundabout at Haberton Road and Don Tyson Parkway. There was an island that we annexed, and then there was another one that we did as well. So, this is set for a public hearing tonight, and I know I've received several phone calls from property owners about this, and so I'm sure there's probably some folks that wish to speak tonight, because this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this proposed annexation? Anybody wants to go first?
Yeah, just, yeah, just.
Bob, you want to go first?
Go, yes, you'll need to go up there, please, and just start with your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Robert Baxter, and I live at 5201 George Anderson Road out in the country. And I got a letter stating that we were going to be annexed into the city, and other than that, we don't know what the city's gonna do for us. Our taxes going up. Does the city take our guns away from us?
I can, I'll tell you that, no. If you want me to answer these, you should go. I will.
Doug, I'd heard that, but I just thought I'd bring it up.
All right. I'll let you make your argument. I won't interrupt you anymore.
But we, we, my family, we just, we didn't know what's going on, or what happens when we get incorporated to the city. Do we get city water? Do we get city sur? Do they bring it to our property line or what? Right now, I'm on, I'm on city water and gas, and I guess I got about a quarter of a mile that I had to run it through other properties to get to my house. I live out in the middle of a field. That's the way it was, you know, the way it was set up, which is at number 49 on the, on that map. And, and my neighbors live west of me there. You know, whatever they do, they do, but we live up that road. We got a little private drive up from George Anderson all the way up to our house. Then the people across the street, really, it isn't the street, but people on the other side of that property, on the north side, is Dr. Pang, and he goes out to Butterfield Coats Road. That's his road on that side. So, they're in the road through there, even though they have it, it's some Anderson Road. I don't know what it is, but it was just on the map. It isn't a road. So, you know.
You, that's a gravel, gravel lane right now with-
No. Mine, mine's a blacktop. I'm a blacktop mine.
Okay, okay. I'm thinking of another gravel road through there. Okay, sorry.
It isn't, uh, it wouldn't meet the specs of the city. I'll put it like that, 'cause it's private. But anyway, we, we don't know what's gonna happen, so some, I guess somebody will explain it to us.
Doug, uh, Mr. Baxter and I spoke yesterday, and, and, uh, some other folks may have some of the same questions that, that he's asking, first of all, about the, about the guns that, that, uh, I made Mr. Baxter aware that, that our city ordinance, uh, pertaining to discharging of firearms in the city does allow the mayor to grant, uh, permission. Uh, we have, it's not uncommon for, for him to grant permission for people to shoot coyotes, or if it's dove season, or whatever the case may be. Those are handled on a case-by-case basis, but-
Ernest, excuse me, I'm, I'm hard hearing too.
I'm sorry.
Can you talk into the, whatever?
I'm soft spoken, sorry. And then, uh, another question that came up from another property owner had to do with the, as far as the use of the property. Uh, if the property, however the property is being used now, would be allowed to continue, it would be grandfathered in. For example, if somebody had a, had a business and they had a gravel parking lot, didn't have a paved parking lot, just because you come into the, oh, wow.
He turned you up.
Just because you come into the city, we're not gonna require you to pave it. As long as you keep doing what you've been doing, and don't stop for six months, you'd be grandfathered in. Uh, someone asked me about a lot split. They've had a lot split pending with the county. We would honor that if they've, uh, started the process with the county. Uh, we would honor that. Uh, I explained about the, the police and fire protection, that we have, uh, iOS one rating for our fire department, which my understanding has a positive, uh, effect on insurance rates. And as, as it stands now, for the county to provide services to this area, they would have to go through either Springdale or Fayetteville, uh, to get to these properties. So I'm sure I probably left, left quite a bit out, but, but, uh, that was some of the questions that I had received.
I'll answer the one, uh, Robert, about the water rates.
Right.
They, you, you get a, you would get an in-town water rate, which is lower than the out-of-town water rate. If you're on Springdale Water already, your water rate would go down. Now sewer would be up to when sewer gets out there. And, uh, I, I think it'll be pretty soon with all the work going on around that area. But, uh, that would be, that would be between you and Springdale Water, which is not technically, uh, it's a city, it's kind of a quasi-city department. They have their own commission there, and they're supported by ratepayers, not taxpayers. So they make decisions based on what, what makes sense, but, but I, I know that sewer is gonna be in that area if it's not already, and you just have to talk with them, though, about when you could get hooked on if you, if you wanted to do that. You wouldn't be forced to.
Right, well, I'm eighty years old.
Well, you don't look it.
Well, I am. But anyway, I don't, you know, I'm just curious, when all that would, when all that would take place?
Uh, look, it's gonna be up to the property owner. What, when, when, when all, all, all what would take place? 'Cause as far as development, that's gonna be up to the property owners and developers that work together and make deals, and that city's not gonna dictate that.
Yeah, any, any current use or, uh, of the properties wouldn't change anytime by law and by ordinance. If property's annexed into a city, it automatically comes in as agricultural property, which is the lowest classification, and that would not be changed unless the property owner has to have it changed. So.
That's about all I have. Somebody else has something they can-
Let me, let me just go ahead and mention something else, since we're talking about things that would change. And, uh, Wyman, now you, you correct me if I'm wrong, but they would be required, they would, they would, uh, if they're in the city, residential in the city, then their waste disposal will be, will move to waste management, which is the, the company that we contract with. So that would be a change that, that I, I'd be, wanna be sure y'all are aware of.
I ran Sunray here for twenty years. Waste Management, I don't know who they are, but-
Oh, they're big. And that, that, and that, that's not always a good thing, but-
Anyway, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is John Lizon, and I am, um, in Area Fifty-One, which is kind of apropos for tonight. Um, I just have a question. I, I, you know, you've talked a lot about, uh, you know, town water and sewer and, you know, uh, disposal for trash, but wha- what about taxes? Are, are we, are we going to owe taxes to the city of Springdale? And if so, what is that rate?
Wyman, would you know the, how mu- how different is the millage, property tax millage between, for city millage, between, uh, county and city? Do you know that right offhand? Right. And what is that rate? Do you know that? Four mills? We'll, we can get you what that would translate to.
Okay, that'd be perfect.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
One other question would be if we're, if we're paying those taxes, for example, and I've heard the gentleman talk about, uh, one of his roads by his home by forty-nine. I'm, my property, the East Hunters Ridge Road, actually dumps right into my driveway, and it's all gravel. It, I mean, is the city required to pave that road? Am I required to pave that road, or how does that work?
Well, you're not. Uh, Patsy, do we know if that, if that is a private drive, or if that's a?
I think it's a private drive. Does the county maintain it now?
I've nev- I've never seen them maintain it.
I think it's a private drive. I can't really find that.
Yeah, Howard Anderson is also a private drive.
Yeah.
You, you, the access from the west, Mr. Baxter's actually got a gate, and then on the east side, maybe one you're thinking about, the gravel.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's clearly, clearly a private drive, but just because it's coming to the city,
Yeah.
wouldn't change that one bit.
Okay.
Uh, it would remain a private drive.
Yeah, it sounds like the only way that would change is with, is with property owners working with developers to, and, and developers would be required, they, they could do it themselves, or they might work with the city, depending on what the, what the project was-
Gotcha.
-for, for, uh, roads that would be up to the city standard, but it wouldn't be-
It's not the city's responsibility. Is that what you're saying?
Not until it's a public road.
Gotcha. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Did I answer that right?
If the county maintains it now, then the city would maintain it if it annexed. If the county doesn't maintain it, then we wouldn't be doing anything different than what it can.
Right. There you go.
So I'm not gonna get rid of blacktop there.
Not unless you become a public street.
Anyone else?
I think we got another one there. Yeah.
I'm Oliver. I'm number twenty-six, uh, Butterfield Coats. My question, I guess a couple of questions. Look, we have current covenants out there. Will they not be in effect, or if the city should?
The city, you mean like protective covenants for your subdivision, or for your property?
Yeah, there are current covenants out there, off the whole area.
Yeah, the city does not enforce those. That's a private contract between the property owners. We don't enforce, uh, protective covenants.
So they would not be effective if that came into the city, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we don't enforce those. Now, if there's something that, that, that is a violation of city ordinance, that's gonna depend on what it is. For example, if you have a, a, a business, as I mentioned, you'd be allowed to continue that. You wouldn't have to rezone, or as long as you keep doing what you're doing. But we don't enforce covenants.
Okay. It's effective because I tried to sell some of the property. Right now, you can't build a warehouse before you build a home on four acres or six. 'Cause these are all four and six.
Is that, uh, because of your covenants?
I don't think that's, is it? Okay.
Uh, that probably is the county.
That's probably the county, yeah.
The covenant, if it's, if it's truly a protective covenant or restricted covenant, that wouldn't change.
That won't change.
That's enforced by the property owners, but now if the county's got certain zoning regulations, we have different zoning regulations in the county. However, whatever you, you're doing, using now, you would be allowed to continue as long as it doesn't, it would become grandfathered. Technical terms of non-conform use, but you're grandfathered as long as it's, it continues and doesn't stop for more than six months. You're allowed to continue as you are now.
Um, okay. I mean, that doesn't really answer what I'm asking, but, so if, if the, that property comes into the city, the city's, the covenants will be ineffective. It won't be effective if it's county.
I'm not sure we're talking about the same thing when we talk about covenants.
Well-
Covenants are usually something I, I think of like a PLA has, has in place.
Well, maybe so.
When, if you're talking about zoning ordinance and zoning requirements, ours, ours may be different than the county.
Yeah.
But like Ernest said, it won't change anything you're doing now, but I, to be honest with you, it could change something you might wanna do in the future.
Okay. So what you're saying, if an individual comes to the city, and it goes into the city, and they wanna rezone something, and the city approves it, that's the way it is. Uh, the septic, listen, I got a question about the septic. I don't know about everybody else, but we're on, uh, uh, our own septic, but how long, what kind of timeframes are gonna be to go with sewer?
Yeah, that's a, that's gonna be a question for Springdale Water, and-
Okay.
I think with the development, that's probably gonna go on all around you out there, that I would think sewer will, will be available-
Yeah.
-before long, if it's not already, but it would still be up to you whether to hook on or not, I think. Isn't that right, Patsy? Right?
Well, that's a lot of property owners, and to be honest with you, in the center of that, running east and west is very low, and I know you all at one time took some land in southwest of our vest, and you put a lift station out there. I think that's something people need to be concerned about. Uh, if you felt like you had to do it, it's really low on that creek bed in there.
Okay.
Um, and I know you probably can't answer that now, but-
I, I promise you I can.
Yeah.
But we got people who probably can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so the sanitation rates would be probably double from what most of us are paying. Um-
Okay. Uh, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
We can tell you what waste management is, but it's on our website.
What?
How much a month is that? You remember, Wyman? About sixteen dollars o- a month.
Fifteen a month.
The residential for, that's, uh-
Okay.
That's waste and recycle.
Well, they were charging substantially more out there, 'cause they do pick up on Butterfield Coats, but maybe that would-
You'd be under the city, city contract with waste management.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense. But that lift station thing is really important to me, because, and a lot of people probably, and that's something that probably should be figured out. How is this gonna be voted on? Just by the city council, or?
These island annexations or enclaves can be taken by ordinance-
Okay.
-by this, with, by the city with the most borders surrounding the island. Yes.
Um, one more question. Who is Ward Two Councilman there?
Uh, I'm Kevin Flores, and-
Kevin and Mike, yes.
Mr. Mike Overton.
I'm Mike Overton.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Yeah, now they are, just for your, for everybody's information, y'all probably know this, if you vote, they're all voted on citywide, but we do have to have two alder, uh, two council, uh, persons per ward.
I just noticed in your note, it said that would become Ward Two.
Yes.
And I was just curious. Um-
We, we think it would. Now, we've gotta redo wards. I can't imagine this one changing, but we've gotta redo wards after every census.
Well, one more question, I remember our comment. When you talk about law enforcement, maybe improvement or ambulance, we only, we have, what, an ambulance a mile and a half away from us? That's not gonna improve us. Um, it's at the freeway stop south. Um, as Ford's Police, I see the county out there probably at least twice or four times a day, patrolling. And I lived in Springdale fifty years. Colby, Langford, and I, you know, except for complaint-driven, I don't recall seeing a lot of patrol going on, and so that would be different, I believe. Not that they wouldn't respond as quick, I just think it's something that ought to be taken into consideration, you know? Um, and some of us, I guess, on my last statement, we're actually closer to Fayetteville lines right there than we are to Springdale, so I'm not saying I wanna be in Springdale, or Fayetteville. I'm just saying, you, you call it an island entirely, pretty much, and it is, but it's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jason Wamack. I'm fourteen, just a little bitty, little minnow in the pond.
You say fifteen?
Fourteen, I'm sorry.
Fourteen.
Right there. John's my neighbor, right across the street, Area Fifty-One.
Okay.
Um, one question I have is, uh, on the Springdale map, a long-range plan is to bring a road from two sixty-five down Albright, buy John's property on Area Fifty-One, and split my property, fourteen, and split property twelve and run out to Hilton Road. That was on one of your maps from two thousand and seventeen. I'm just wondering, how are those projects prioritized? I mean, I know there's a lot of different roads in Springdale. You guys are wanting to cut through here and there. Um, obviously, by looking at, yes, it's a natural progression to come from two sixty-five down Albright, past his property, but it's basically gonna take my shop out of my backyard. Um, I've got some, I think I've got seven pine trees that were planted in nineteen seventy-eight. Um, so I just wanna know when that's gonna hap- that, that would be one question. I wanna know when that's gonna happen. Um, you guys, your water and sewer, I looked it up today, your water and sewer ends basically at, at, uh, Parcel Forty-four, and it also runs down, uh, the backside of, uh, Hamlet Street. So my question is, 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 do you guys really wanna annex it so you can get water to the parcel that is just south of nineteen fifteen and forty-seven? Because there's no water there, and there's no Fayetteville water there. So I'm looking at, I did get a letter, I don't remember the cat's name, but he was, I think he was fishing. I don't know if he was fishing for the city, or who he was fishing for, or the person that bought that piece of property, that, you know, you guys talk about us being an island, but you guys annexed a piece of property that made an island. The piece just south of nineteen fifteen and forty-seven. Fayetteville's on both sides of that piece of property. I don't know how that got annexed in Springdale when you skipped over, you know, you just kinda stuck it. I believe Terminella, Tom Terminella is one that eventually, originally developed that piece of property, and I think it went back to the bank, and I believe Mr. Anderson bought it back. I don't know exactly who got it annexed into Springdale, but, I mean, you guys are talking about islands. That's definitely an island. So I guess, basically, I'm gonna keep this short. I, I don't really see a point to be annexed in the city of Springdale. I've already talked to my insurance agent. He said my, my fire rate, my ins- my portion of my homeowner's policy from a fire standpoint will not change, won't be any cheaper. Um, my other question is, is, uh, I mean, you guys have four-laned Butterfield Coats to the intersection of Don Tyson and Butterfield Coats. Um, I haven't seen any maps. I would think that that would probably be in the plans at some point. Um, and that may be, you guys may be waiting to annex the property out of the county. It may be easier for you guys to put, you know, a four-lane road through there. I'm, I'm not sure what the protocol is on that, but, you know, I will challenge any of you guys to come sit on my porch from four-thirty to six o'clock at night. That road is a drag race. There's people that fly down that road. I've, I have yelled at people, I've flipped them, you know, whatever you have to do. But, I mean, when I can hear them coming, and I can run from my shop that is on, my, my lot's only an acre and a half, not a big deal, but my shop's about an acre from the front, and I can run from my shop and go point at them and tell them to slow down. They're driving way too fast. So I may be in the minority. I would like to stay in the county. I would like this road to stay two-lane, and I'd like to just, if it ain't broke, why fix it? I, I mean, and, and I've talked to several of my neighbors, and I think they feel the same way. Um, I know it's growth, it's progress, but I really don't see what, what you guys call an island is, 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 there might be some people that are, are not here, I, we haven't heard from, that may have some interest in developing their land for another purpose, i.e. for subdivision. But I bought my property about ten or eleven years ago, but the reason I bought it was 'cause I was out in the country. I feel like I'm out in the country. I mean, now, I mean, of course, there's- I mean, now, I mean, of course, there's another subdivision, I'm starting to see roof lines and stuff, which, that's fine, but. So when you guys say about this grandfathered in, so I can load up my brush in my yard and burn it? Being in agriculture, does that put us under a different city ordinance? I, I have five or six vehicles on my piece of property, some run, some don't. Is a city inspector ordinance guy going to come and go, oh, you got to clean all this stuff up?
Well, uh, I don't know which, which, which point to address, I guess I can address the last one first.
Yeah, let's start with that one.
But, uh, uh, our, uh, parking on the grass ordinance, for example, only applies to residentially zoned property or property that's zoned A-one and a platted subdivision, which I don't believe you're in a platted subdivision.
Okay.
So that would not apply. As far as the burning brush goes, chief, would that require a burn permit? And those are, my understanding is they're fairly simple to acquire. Uh.
Does county not acquire, require that?
Does county not require you to get a burn permit?
No. And see, the problem I have with applying for a burn permit, let's say, how, if I apply for a burn permit, how long does it take me to get it? Okay, so if I get a burn permit and it's, the wind's blowing twenty-five miles an hour south that day, I can't burn my stuff.
Well, your neighbors may appreciate that. We, there's a reason, there's a reason we have times we can burn, we'll let people burn and times we won't.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, but my, my point is, is if I get a permit and the wind's blowing thirty miles an hour that day, I can't burn. So right now, I can burn.
But should you?
Apparently the county doesn't care.
Okay.
So.
Like I say, your neighbor might, if it ever gets out of hand.
I've got several neighbors here and I've never had them say a word.
And then, and then about the, about the roads and Pat, Patsy may want to chime in on this as well. Our, our master street plan, we do have roads indicated on our master street plan, that's merely a guide and that's driven by development. In other words, we, we draw a line on the map that says, we think there may be a road here someday, but most times that is driven by development. Uh, the city's not, most instances are, I mean, we, we have in other places in the city where it's been needed, but usually streets are built and driven by development, for the need for the street.
Yeah, it's, it's a line on a map, uh, and Patsy correct us if we, or add to this if you need to, but, but it's a line on a map showing a connection. It doesn't mean it's going by your, necessarily that it's going by your property and, or, and we have no idea when it'll happen. It, that, as Ernest said, that's going to, that's going to be driven by residential development in, in that area.
Well, I mean, you guys are running water and sewer on your, you know, behind, behind that, so you have to assume that. I mean, it's just hard as a property owner to say, oh, yeah, we might, we might put a road through there, we might not.
All I'm saying is, a lot, uh, the master road, uh, street plan does not mean that's exactly where that road's going. It means there, there is, there, they think there will be a need for a connection there at some point.
Well, yeah, I mean, it makes a straight line, but it also, you know, basically takes my, you know, property and, you know, makes it worthless, but, all right, that's all I got.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that. Things just keep popping up, so, um, we have a fire pit, so in the back of our, so where the fifty-one is, we're way down there, about where the line is between the thirteen and the fifty-one. We have a fire pit, we get down there and hang out and just chill. Is that considered? That's totally fine, okay. And then the other question I had while my neighbor here was talking, is this a done deal? I guess that's what I'm unclear, is this, do we vote on this or is this a, is this a, is this a done deal? I don't, I don't understand that part of it.
I, I can't answer that, I, I never assumed the council, anything with the council's a done deal. But this is, this is something that state law allows a council to do by ordinance, which means the council votes on it. And because it's eliminating an island and it, uh, and the only, the only city, you mentioned, somebody mentioned Fayetteville. Yeah, said, well, I don't necessarily want to be in Fayetteville, well, I'm glad to hear that, but anyway, the, uh, uh, Fayetteville couldn't do this, Fayetteville couldn't take it by ordinance because they don't have the most border surrounding it. So that's a, so Springdale's the only city that can do this, if a city's going to do it, and it can be done by ordinance. So it will be a vote of the city council.
And when does that happen?
It's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
It's on the council agenda tonight, we, we did something similar, uh, we've had two, uh, over time, as, as, as development occurs, we actually did a, an island annexation, I believe it was two thousand nine or two thousand ten, it was over a hundred parcels. Uh, just cleaning up certain areas and the statute used to read that, uh, one city had to completely surround it before it could be annexed. But they, they changed that to say if it's more than one city, the city with the greater area around it. And we had instances where, back in twenty-ten, where we were dealing with Johnson and we were dealing with Elm Springs, we were dealing with, uh, with, uh, Johnson and just trying to clean up some of these islands. And this is, I guess, kind of the next logical one, and as, as was mentioned earlier, referred to earlier, there's still some islands up in the northwest area as well that, that will probably be eventually addressed as well.
Gotcha.
We haven't, we haven't determined, you know, which city has the greater area, but, but here it's, it's clearly Springdale, not Fayetteville.
Gotcha. Well, my vote would be the same, I would like to keep it county, but, um, obviously we don't have a lot of choice here, it's up to the council, so, um, that's just my opinion.
Thanks, John.
My name is Michael Wilson, I live, uh, on, uh, number thirty-one on the list there. And I've, I've been out there, I bought that property in nineteen ninety-one. And when I bought it, on our survey for when they had Zion, that's called Zion Place Subdivision. And it was all Fayetteville Growth Area at that time. Uh, everything was signed off by the city of Fayetteville on all the easements for the water, everything else. Um, and I just feel like, you know, I'd rather stay in the county because I don't see a, 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 anything that's going to help me in either city. And right now, uh, you was talking about the trash there a while ago, uh, if, if, if it goes into the city, you're saying it's going to be about sixteen dollars a month, uh, for trash pickup?
Trash in.
Because I know right now, we was paying waste management seventy-five dollars. And I've got it for twenty-five dollars from Phillips Trash Company, that's where I went. And I didn't know if waste management made you the same rate, I didn't know what they done.
They'll be the same as every other, every other resident in Springdale, which is around sixteen dollars a month.
Okay. And, uh, if you'll look on the map there, our existing water line comes in off of, uh, George Anderson Road and it comes in right there, uh, between thirty-four and thirty-five. Off of that thirty-five inch water main line there, and it comes right down behind my house on thirty-one, all the way down to Butterfield Coats Road. And then it tees to the left and it tees to the right. And then it goes down there and stops, um, before, at the end of twenty-seven there, I think, is where it stops. Because that was all done in the subdivision when it was planted. Now, if they have a run like a sewer, where would they run that at? Because of the elevations of the property from over by George Anderson Road down to Butterfield Coats Road, it, it's got a pretty good slope to it. And trying to get sewer, if they just run it down Butterfield Coats Road, then how's these people over on George Anderson Road going to get to it? I mean, they can't cross anybody's property with it. So they'd either have to come down where the existing water line is, where there is an easement already for the electric and the water? Would that be where they'd put the sewer?
That's going to be a question for the water department, I'm sorry, I, I'd answer you if I could.
Well, I mean, uh, y'all said y'all could vote on this tonight, but if we, if we got questions, we want to have to go talk to somebody else, you know?
They'll figure it out.
Okay. And then, uh, I just think, you know, we just need to stay in the city, because it was, like I say, it was proposed to be in Fayetteville Growth Area and it says it right here on the, the plat for that whole subdivision, and I think there was almost ninety-one acres there. And I've got six of it myself, and I'd just soon stay in the county and be done with, and not do anything until it builds on up. And I know on my property, there's a creek, a little drainage line that runs underneath Butterfield Coats Road and right, and comes right on down and crosses my, one corner of my property. And right now, before there's any more houses built in there, it runs pretty good when it really gets to raining. Now, if they build houses on that other, um, and stuff up there on that one that y'all just annexed in, uh, it's got a containment pit there now for water, but it still flows good. And if they keep adding more houses right there, it's just going to get worse. Unless the city could do something to eliminate it. So, but, uh, you know, I just want to say that I, I think they just started leaving it in the county and be done with it for right now and come back later maybe or something.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
My name is John Benir. I'm on twenty-eight. And just to repeat his point on city of Fayetteville, that's the water we're on. So I don't know what you do about it.
Well, water service boundaries don't necessarily go along with city limit boundaries, they're like school district boundaries.
All right.
And I don't know if, if Fayetteville and Springdale Water Utilities may work something out to move those water service boundaries or if they'll stay the same. I don't, they don't, they can stay the same, so I don't know the answer to that. That's going to be between the two water departments to work out, to see which, which happens, but.
That, that is not a road there, though. That's just a lane.
Howard, Howard Anderson?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that's a private drive.
Right.
Okay. Well, I'd like to stay in the county.
Thank you.
Just one, one note, just for, for reference, uh, should the council, uh, approve this ordinance tonight, it would not take effect for thirty days. I don't know if anyone's curious about that, whether it happens, you walk out of here tonight and you're automatically in the city, it wouldn't, wouldn't take effect for thirty days. Anyone else wish to comment?
Number twenty-six, I would just really ask the council, I'm not speaking for everybody here, but put yourself in our shape. Most of us been out there for a while, probably me less than anyone. And some of us are to the point and age in our life, not everybody, so forgive me if I throw you in accidentally. But I really wish you would consider not approving this, because the bottom line for us, I think a lot of people feel like they're going to wake up some morning and we're going to have these sky views of three or four layer apartments like you're building around. A lot of towns are building them and that's money for Springdale.
Let me, let me correct one thing.
If somebody rezones the land, that could happen.
The towns aren't building them. They have to be zoned properly and, and they have to, that has to be approved.
Uh, so that's, that's profit for Springdale, it's not profit for us. And, and I would just ask the council to really think about that, that's all. Uh, hey, it might work out great, but I, on the inside, I don't see it, but anyhow, thank you.
Thanks, Oliver. Did we have anybody? Yeah, yes.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, but I actually don't wish to, but I feel compelled. Uh, my name is Bonnie.
Bonnie?
Uh, I, I love parcel twelve, my family moved there about nineteen years ago. And over the years, there's been a whole lot of interest in it, excuse me. Um, I have a couple of questions, um, and it's probably been stated before, what are the benefits to Springdale if we're annexed?
Uh, I can tell you what the cha, we, we discussed the changes, you're going to have to decide whether it's a benefit or not.
What are the benefits to the city of Springdale? The residents of Springdale, the city of Springdale, what are the benefits? Not counting myself, how does everyone else benefit if we are annexed into the city of Springdale?
Uh, I don't know that it affects the rest of the city.
Thank you. Um, and how would it benefit us if we're annexed into the city of Springdale? What do you see the benefits as?
Well, I've talked about the water rates, uh, I've talked about, uh, trash, which sounds like it's going to be less for most of you, depending on what you're doing with it now. Um, I think the, uh, you know, if, if you ever do want to market your property, you're probably in a better position with developers. But I don't know that, I'm not a developer. Um, but I, I, look, I, I, I will not deny that that area out there is going to change. And it's going to change probably whether you're, to some extent, whether you're in the city of Springdale or not.
Uh, I understand, we have seen many changes over the, the nineteen years that, that we've been there. And I'm not opposed to change and I'm certainly not opposed to people, um, and I know that everything's not all about me or my family. Um, I, I do want to go on record, though, as saying that I would like to stay in the county. Um, if there's no benefit to the city of Springdale or the other residents in the city of Springdale, then I, I would like to be left alone. Um, we already have city water, we're fine with the water we have, we're fine with our septic tank. Um, the sheriff's department has been wonderful and I know that Springdale has a marvelous fire department and, and police department and we're so grateful for that to be in the area. Springdale's a wonderful town, you know, it produced my husband and I'm grateful for that, is that, uh, he raised a, a, a good boy. Um, you mentioned that, um, I believe things would be grandfathered in. Um, I have three horses buried on my property, so I don't at the moment have a living horse, but, um, you know, there's sheep and chickens and, um, numerous other things also buried on the property. Um, we, we would like to be able to still have cattle and horses and I understand that is still possible because we would keep the designation of usage, land usage, even if we're annexed into the city? Okay. Um, but if we did someday decide to sell and we want to sell to another family or another family says, we would love to do what you've done. Uh, we want to have a garden, we want to raise chickens, we want to have cattle, we want our children to have this life, but we don't want to be out in the boonies. Um, could we sell to someone and say, yes, you will be able to do that? Can we sell?
It sounds like most of what you're wanting to do would be allowed in an A-one zone anyway and it's not going to change unless you or the person or the people you sell it to ask for a zoning change.
Okay.
Yeah, it comes into the city, it automatically comes in as A-one agricultural district, so all those things that you mentioned would be allowed for you and anyone you sold it to unless some subsequent owner down the, down the line wanted to have a rezone, so yes.
Okay, thank you so much. And just, um, something else, I, I write much, much better than I speak and I organize my thoughts better on paper. Do I have time to write something and send it to each of you and have you look at it and consider it before any kind of decision is made? That would be so wonderful, I'm sorry I didn't have it already done.
That depends on what they decide to do tonight, I can't answer for it.
Could I, could I beg, could I ask for mercy and say, please, just?
Let me, let me say this, we've done this a lot and we've done areas much smaller than this, we've done areas with many more residents in it. And we, we do hear those same concerns and I'm not going to say that those concerns aren't valid because they're your. And I'm not gonna say that those concerns aren't valid because they're your concerns. And, and, and we're not perfect. And, but I, I will tell you that, that we have areas that have annexed in over, over the years. And the, the concerns that we heard just haven't panned out. It's not, it's not gonna change your world overnight. It's just not. And, and I, my hope is, when I said it wasn't a benefit to the other residents of the city, I mean, certainly there, there are future development that could happen. That, but again, that's gonna be up to you all as property owners and any, or, or as developers, if you own the property. Those, those changes are gonna be up to you all and on your timeline, not ours.
All right. All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Holly Baker. I'm number nineteen on the map. And I have no questions. I just wanna say, I think that most of us here probably agree that if it's not broke, don't fix it. We like being in the county. We said, see no benefit to being in the city. I'm perfectly happy with my trash service. Nob Hill Fire and Rescue is who services us and has done a fantastic job. And I just wanna go on record as saying I don't wanna be annexed into the city.
Thank you, Holly.
Does that, anyone else wish to, to speak? If there's no more comments, we'll close the public hearing and we'll begin our regular agenda.
All right, thank you. Word item nine on the agenda. This is the portion of the agenda that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If you have any comments for the council that are not dealing with an item, an item that's already on tonight's agenda, this would be the time that you'd be invited to speak. We ask again that you go to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief. And understand that anything you bring up during this portion of the meeting will not be acted upon tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that's not already on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item ten. Approval of minutes. Council, you've had access to the minutes for a while, for a few days. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve them, the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. What's your pleasure on procedural motions?
I move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion of second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry six zero.
All right. Thank you. I'll turn it over to item twelve, our planning commission report recommendations. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda is an ordinance to correct Scrivener's error in ordinance number fifty-six fifty-three. If any of you deal with legal descriptions, one wrong number can create a havoc. And that's why we had again this time, one number was just incorrect. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance admitting ordinance number fifty-six fifty-three to correct a Scrivener's error, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto. By rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to thoroughfare commercial district C5, declaring an emergency. And you can see on the drawing the property that was rezoned.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
We have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone else in the room? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
The emergency clause bid up.
Second.
Evan? Okay, go ahead, Denise.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries six zero.
And as the case is, we have pending actions to be taken on these properties while they have emergency clauses. The next item is a request to rezone two point seven eight acres located at twenty-seven seventeen East Emma Avenue. The request is to rezone the property from agricultural district A1 to institutional district P1. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance admitting ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to institutional district P1 and declaring an emergency.
Can you go over with the audience of P1, please?
P1 would allow for churches, schools, institutional facilities. I think there's an intention to build a church on this property.
Move the orders pass.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anybody in the audience on this? Okay, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Emergency clause bid up.
Second.
Flores. Fugierus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries six zero.
The next request is to rezone point two one five acres from low density, medium, or low medium density, single-family residential district SF2 to neighborhood office district O1. This is a lot twenty-nine and block, lot thirty of the Ariel Hayes Park addition. Several years ago, this piece of property was converted to a parking lot and is used by the building to the north of it. It was a doctor's office for years. The hospital has owned it for years. A parking lot is not allowed now in an SF2 zone. Rezoning it to O1 would allow it to remain as a parking lot, or if it could be converted back to a residential use, which is what the subdivision was. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends that the property, or that the property be rezoned. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance admitting ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low medium density, single-family residential district SF2 to neighborhood office district O1 and declaring an emergency. And you'll note that the property across the street was rezoned to O1 as well. And it is also used as, as parking.
Move the orders pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Emergency clause.
Second.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries six zero.
The next request is for a conditional use for a use unit forty-two, which is the church synagogue, to be used in this SF2 district. And the, the O1 allows the, for the church as a conditional use, or as a permitted use in O1. So the request is to make that facility into a church with the parking that's associated with that, that's adjacent to it. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends that it be approved with the condition that modifications to the building is outlined by Building and Fire Department be compliant with adopted code ordinances.
What about, what about the parking?
Their parking situation, they have that parking on the back that would be part of this. And then they have a off-site agreement for the property to the east to allow that parking spaces behind the doctor's office to use on weekends. And they can meet the parking requirements with those. And the parking is based on the size of the auditorium. This building has a, they will have a small auditorium and a lot of classroom spaces to be used in this facility. So the planning commission recommends approval. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use for City Point Church at eight oh three Quant is set forth in ordinance number forty thirty."
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carry six zero.
The next item is a request for a waiver of street improvements along Highway one twelve in connection with a tandem lot split for Jim and Betty Cash. As you, as you all are aware, and we've talked about a couple of times, Highway one twelve is a project that's under design by the highway department. And the planning commission recommends that this waiver of street improvements be granted with option one, the title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number thirty-seven twenty-five to Jim and Betty Cash in connection with LS twenty dash fifty-four tandem lot split."
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to pass the resolution with option one in a second. Patsy, I got one question. And I'm, I think I know the answer to this. But where Miller Road comes in, that's gonna be just a break in the median.
I believe so.
Because it's, it's really, if y'all went just a little further north from what's on this map, we'd be at the property that we discussed earlier, the de-annexation question from Cave Springs. It's not very far.
Right.
So, and that's gonna be around about. So this'll be a, this intersection will be a, just a break in access.
I believe so. At least that's the planes we've seen at this point. Yes.
When, I'm talking about when one twelve is improved.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, motion with option one. Okay. Anybody? Okay, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carry six zero.
The next item is a request for a waiver of sidewalks to be built in connection with a single-family home that's being built at thirteen two ninety-four Robbins Road. I think we've waived sidewalk construction in this area previously. The title of the resolution, or planning commission recommends option one. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution authorizing a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number thirty-seven twenty-five to Ray Hathaway in connection with thirteen two ninety-four Robbins Road, a single-family dwelling."
Is this north, northwest of the city, right?
Yes. Yes. The new six twelve bypass is just to the north of this property.
Motion to approve.
Option one.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve with option one. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Flores.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Carry six zero.
The next item is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a large-scale development called the I forty-nine Industrial Park, L twenty-one thirty-four. Planning Commission recommends approval. They're asking for a waiver of street improvements to West Apple Blossom and Graham Road. This is a project that's being developed in connection with the extension of Dixieland Road. All of their permanent access to this property for development that they're developing at this time would be off of Dixieland Road. We know there's a coordination issue with when they build their warehouses and when the Dixieland Road project is to move forward. They understand they couldn't occupy any of the buildings until that road is completed. This is also the project that we retained the area right adjacent to Dixieland Road that would be C2 development. This is the warehouse portion to that. At this time, they would have an access off of Apple Blossom as a construction access to get down to this site, which has already been established. They have indicated that they would be willing to work with the city and Public Works to make sure that Apple Blossom is maintained usable while construction is going on. I think we all think that Apple Blossom needs to be one of those roads that's considered in the next bond program. It would take cooperation between the city of Lowell and the city of Springdale to do that improvement. So it takes a little bit of time to get those things together. So the planning commission recommends approval of this resolution with option one. They will dedicate the right-of-way for Apple Blossom, and they have dedicated the right-of-way for Dixieland across this piece of property. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number thirty-seven twenty-five to I forty-nine Industrial Park in connection with L twenty-three, twenty-one thirty-four, large-scale development. And that is improvements to West Apple Blossom and Graham Road. And I didn't mention they will not have any access to Graham Road. The access that is out there that was temporarily established is being closed down and will be permanently, fencing will be put back so that there would be no access to Graham Road. Graham Road is one of those roads that could be cut completely off when the six twelve bypass goes through.
One other thing that came up, I don't think you mentioned it, Patsy, that I wanted the council to know, is that Crossland has also agreed to work with Public Works, with James, to make sure that they keep the road in good repair.
Yeah.
Until it's eventually done, keep Apple Blossom in good repair as they, if it's damaged by any of their construction traffic.
Move the resolution pass, option one.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I, I didn't, I didn't hear your, I didn't hear your question.
And it may not be exactly Highway six twelve, but about a year ago, I heard talks of development along Apple Blossom and potentially an access onto, onto the interstate from there. Have we heard anything else?
Well, the current plans we've seen would be in access at seventy-one. And whether we can get access roads along the north side of six twelve all the way back to, to tie into some of these, we don't know yet. It looks like it, that Dixieland would go under six twelve at this time because it gotta come up and go over forty-nine. All of that still has to be worked out. But parallel access roads is not something that we have been able to work out with the highway department. They just really started to talk to us about the interchange at seventy-one and two sixty-five within the last couple of weeks about how we would want the, the trails put, you know, in each of those locations. So we've just started those discussions.
Patsy, the six twelve, I'm trying to remember in my head how they've got it laid out right now. But does it cut across the, sort of the southwest?
It, it cuts across the southwest corner of this property, yes. And there is a, an alignment that has been worked on for quite some time. They, as I'm, I don't think they've started acquiring any right-of-way yet on this portion of it. But as, as we've talked about in, in the past, it's very important for, for us, for the six twelve bypass to be extended all the way to two sixty-five. Because that's how we address our traffic problem. It's got to get all the way to two sixty-five. So we're, we're working with the highway department very closely on that, trying to get that as part of the, the next project to move forward. It's on the state tip, it's on the, on the regional tip. We're trying to put it every place we can to get funding for it, to get it designed and built as quickly as possible.
That was actually part of the, that was part of the narrative of, of the half-cent sales tax extension.
That's correct.
So, so we think that they, they are committed to funding at least to two sixty-five.
And discussing within the last two weeks about those interchanges and what we want the trails and stuff to do is really encouraging because we had not had those conversations with them up to that point. And we just had those last week or the week before, the weeks all run together, but very recently.
So there, the, the contractor will not be using Graham Road?
Will not be using Graham Road, correct. During construction or once the project is completed, their access will be Dixieland. And when Apple Blossom is approved, you know, permanent access as they build closer to that area. But right now, everything that has been approved will access off of Dixieland.
So when I went out there today, Apple Blossom is in okay shape.
So, when I went out there today, Apple Blossom is in okay shape. And I know we're bringing Dixieland down. And I know where Dixieland has been brought down now, there is sidewalk improvement there already.
Right.
So, Crossland, or whoever the contractor is, at the access point of Apple Blossom, that is not necessarily gonna be the permanent access.
I, I think the design is for it to cross pretty close to where it is now. There's not much of an offset, other than all of the street will be on, this piece of property is not on, nothing's being taken off of the houses along Walden Street. Nothing's coming off of those. So if it takes a little bit of a realignment at that intersection, that's what will have to be done. I think the, the project's already designed. It hasn't been bid or anything, but I think it, you know, we're getting close to final design if we're not already there.
Brian, were you asking about the, the current construction access off of Apple Blossom? If the, if their permanent access will be in the same place?
In the, in the same location.
Well, until we get the layout for what they intend to use at that location, I can't tell you that it's exactly gonna be there. Because there's some drainage issues that we've discussed with them. They may have to shift it enough so that the drainage that comes across the street can be picked up, but we haven't designed any of that portion of it yet.
So, so in this, are they asking at their access to Apple Blossom not to improve that area at their access?
They're asking not to improve that area of Apple Blossom and Graham Road, not to have to do any improvements to that at those, at those two, those two streets. That's what they're asking for.
So, when they're in there constructing and using the heavy equipment, and you can't physically see damage from the top, there could be damage down through. So they, they do not want to come along and say, hey, where we have come in and done this work with this heavy equipment, it's gonna be heavy equipment. They're, they're not going to commit to redoing that area?
Not with this project, they're not. Because they're only building warehouses that are on the southern portion of this piece of property. Nothing up at that location, it's just their access point.
Well, I truly feel like that wherever heavy equipment comes in and out onto our city street, they need to be obligated to repair a section working with their engineering department.
Well, they are.
And I think they agreed to work with Public Works and the engineering department to fix whatever is damaged while they're using that access point.
They're just not, they're just not doing that.
They're not gonna widen it out and do curb gutter and sidewalk on their portion of it because right now, we don't have a design for, for Apple Blossom all the way through. They will dedicate right-of-way their half of the street across through there, but until we design the drainage, and there's some significant drainage that comes across there, they're asking not to have to do street improvements because of that.
I, I'm not sure I understand why we're not requiring them to do street improvements to Apple Blossom.
Well, the, the issue is right now, we don't have it designed to know, is it, you know, will it be if they build their half just using the center line of the road and to, to the edge that they would have to, if that fits in with the design of the entire street.
We, and we've done this before.
Right.
When we know we're going to do, I mean, we're very confident that all of Apple Blossom's gonna have to be improved, and hopefully with the next bond issue.
But also, sometimes in the past, we take payment lieu of.
Yeah, so option three of this would allow us to not necessarily require them to immediately do this, but sort of put some money aside to when we have a better plan in mind or on paper that we could.
It would just be to the minimum, whatever, whatever the commission, or the master street plan shows, and I think it shows it as a minor collector. So it'd be the width of that, and normally what we do that is the width and, you know, they would have to, to build over and above to get it Collector Street. We don't, we haven't done that very many times that we made them pay the full cost of building a Collector Street. Now, sometimes we've asked for payment in lieu of improvements for what would be if it was just a local street, and then, and dedicate the right-of-way for all of it. The thing is, we don't know exactly how it's gonna be designed drainage, and I'll say this again. There's some drainage issues up there, they're gonna have to be addressed, and they're pretty close to where this location is. Not knowing what they're gonna do, you know, we don't want them to build it and tear it out.
We don't know the drainage issue for their project, or just drainage issue just for the roadway?
For the roadway. Because there's a lot of, of water that comes out of Lowell down through there. And, quite honestly, the JB Hunt parking lot was built there, and they didn't do any drainage improvements either, and they're contributing to the drainage area in that too. And, but that's on Lowell side, that's something we have to work out with the City of Lowell. It's not just as simple as just being a street in the City of Springdale because it's gonna be split, it was split between three cities, but now that Bethel Heights is in, in Springdale, we at least only have two cities. And I think there may even be one little island there that's in the county that we may need to do an island annexation. There used to be, I don't know if it's still there or not, so it's, you know, it, it, it's a complicated piece to do, it really is.
I'm just wondering, will they be providing more water to the drainage issue to the roadway?
With this project that we have a force with this large scale, no. Not, not up in that area, they're building all down in this area down here. They're doing detention on this area down in this end. Now, they have some temporary or some concepts of how drainage detentions would work up through there, but we're not, we're not approving that portion of it yet.
Is the drainage that's, that's there, that you're talking about, that crosses and some, a little of it goes under Apple Blossom? That flows from north to south, right?
Brian?
Oh, it flows from south to, hmm. It's flowing north, okay.
And, and it goes into that area that's up there behind JB Hunt, and it goes through that subdivision, and if you drive down through there when it rains very much, the, the road is underwater. And has been several many times. But it's not all coming from this project either.
We think, we think that's gonna be a project that the city needs to oversee, and when we, and improve Apple Blossom, to be honest with you, Apple Blossom should be improved all the way, all the way to the railroad tracks.
Yeah, it does.
On the, on the east side of 71.
And it's a project that could be listed, and federal funds could be used as a partnership like we're doing the extension of Jean George South with the City of Johnson. It could be one of those projects that we fund that way as we move through the, through the process of developing projects of regional significance and partnerships between two cities. We've done that, you know, we did that south, we can do that on this one. It's, it's just not to the point where we know enough about it at this point to give you all those answers yet.
So, so they have, have they submitted a large scale on this?
Yes, they have, the, the large scale for the phase they want to develop at this point, yes. Not the entire property, which they are not required to submit a large scale for the entire piece of property.
So with what they're gonna be doing, does that affect Apple Blossom Road right now, except for just the ingress and egress?
During construction, that will be their access point. The warehouses that they are proposing, the access will be from Dixieland off of Apple Blossom, coming down Dixieland. It won't be any further to the west than that, but at Dixieland.
So, they've submitted a large scale for the southern portion of the property, correct?
Correct.
Basically, the elbow or whatever that is that sticks up to the north is, nothing's planned for that at this point in time. There's no large scale.
Correct.
So, what if we approve this waiver tonight, and then in six months, they come in with a large scale on the northern piece of the property? Is the, this waiver already in existence, and they don't have to do any improvements to Apple Blossom because of that?
Well, you notice the large scale number, it's tied to this large scale.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that means.
That means the large scale that we're approving that only has this piece down here, and their access road is all we're approving. We're not telling them we're giving a waiver for that portion up there, only as their access point for this one. Gives us an opportunity to come back.
Yeah, okay.
They'll either have to amend that large scale, and we'll have to come back again because they amend it and add more to it, or it'll be a separate large scale, depending on how long it is.
So what if they amend it?
They'll have to come back, they'll have to ask for a different waiver at that time. We'll have to look at it then.
They'd still have to ask for a waiver at that point in time.
And the reason that, and I say that because we put that large scale number in here for that reason, so that we know it's tied to the large scale that was approved as L-2134, because we know what's on that large scale.
Well, that's a pretty significant reason right there, Patsy, I don't know why.
Well, the number's in the, in the title.
We have a motion?
We have a motion with option one. With option one.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second with option one. Any other comments or questions?
So, again, one more time for my clarification. If they do a large scale for that upper portion, they have to come back and request this same deal if they want it.
If they want a waiver, yes. If they want to do the street improvements and it doesn't come back to you guys because we approved the large scale and they build the street.
So the way I see it now is, right now, our Public Works is gonna be tasked to work with Crossland to make sure that once they're done with this southern part, and they're not working in, they get this large scale completed, that our Public Works is gonna work with Crossland, and any damage done, Crossland's gonna take care of it.
That's the agreement that the mayor had in, in.
And, and by working with our Public Works, Brian, the way I see that is that our Public Works determines if they have properly repaired the damage, correct?
Right, correct.
Now, let me do say, if, if they have two buildings of a certain size, if they put those two buildings together and it's just the same square footage, the configuration is different in two buildings instead of one, or one building instead of two, that's not a significant change to have to come back and do that. I mean, they're not increasing the amount of warehouse space. If they determine they need it all in one building, rather than two separate buildings that divided it up, to me, that's not a major change, as long as it's in the same area, we have the same number of parking spaces, we have all that kind of stuff, the same access, that's not the, that's not a significant change. If they're adding another building, if they're adding other buildings that are further to the west or to the north, then that's, that's different.
So if they come back with another large scale to build in that portion that sticks up to the north?
Right.
Then, which will access onto Apple Blossom? If it accesses onto Apple Blossom, then they've either, they've gotta either build the, do the street improvements or come back for another waiver.
Right.
Ask for another waiver.
Now, the only one that would change, that wouldn't change is Graham Road because they're not, they're not anticipating any access to Graham Road.
Right.
And I don't anticipate that would change at all.
Right.
So, and it's not just the access point on Apple Blossom, it's the whole transit that they do up and down Apple Blossom could be damaged. There are a couple of crossings that have already settled out there.
Yeah.
And so if they make those worse, they're gonna need to, need to take care of that.
And that, I believe, is what the mayor and, and James have indicated they would.
And Crossland has indicated they would do that. They said, they made that statement at the Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah.
I think Planning Commission was, I don't remember how many were there, but it was, it was unanimous, but one vote, I think.
I believe so, yeah.
Did you say that they've already granted Eastman's along, what was it? Did you say Dixieland?
They've dedicated, they will dedicate the right-of-way, it may have already been done by a, for Dixieland, uh huh.
And you also mentioned that.
And then they would have to dedicate the right-of-way for Apple Blossom too.
The entire length of the, of this property for Apple Blossom?
Of what they have, you know, their front edge.
The front edge, that's what I meant, not just where they're gonna have their entrance.
Right. Now, it would just be a standard dedication, which is 30 feet from the center line. If we design the street, and it has to take more than that, then we, that, that's not covered automatically.
All right.
We have a motion and a second with option one. Any further comments or questions? All right, Denise?
Flores?
No ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
No.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Mayor, the vote was four to two.
Yes.
Carry's five to.
For those of you who aren't aware, that's a rare opportunity for a mayor to vote, is when they are the fifth vote to pass something. That's the only time we get to vote.
We should make you do it more often.
I know you enjoy it when I have to do it. So I can either vote in the affirmative, or I can choose not to vote. There's no such thing in the state of Arkansas as a mayor getting to vote no. I can either vote if, if the situation allows it, or I can just say, I choose not to vote. Because you have to have five to pass anything. And we're two council members short tonight. All right, we'll move on to the, Jeff, Jeff Watson, Finance Committee Chair.
Mayor, the Finance Committee considered the resolution at number 13 having to do with the lease agreement with Northwest Arkansas Food Bank for the lease of the old city administration building in what was formerly Bethel Heights. And the Finance Committee did forward that recommenda, or that resolution with the lease agreement to council with recommendation for approval. I don't know if you have any further, anything further on that?
Kent is here, if, I know we discussed it at, at committee last week.
Move the resolution pass.
Okay.
Second.
I don't think I read it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll read it. I'm sorry. A resolution authorized the mayor and city clerk to enter into a lease agreement with Northwest Arkansas Food Bank, Inc., Incorporated, on property owned by the City of Springdale.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Kent's here if you have any questions for him, or Kent, if you have anything you need to add. We are very appreciative of this opportunity, we think it'll be, we fully support the food bank and think this is a way that, and, and of course, our, our senior senator will benefit from this as well. So, we think it's a good thing for, for both the food bank and for the City of Springdale. All right, any further comments or questions? Ed Denise?
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Carry six zero.
All right, item 14, turn back over to our city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you. Item 14 is an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning, abandoning a portion of utilities meant on property in the City of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, declared emergency for other purposes. This is the one we had the public hearing on at the, one of the public hearings we had before the meeting, and the, there's a drawing in your packet showing the area of the utilities meant to be vacated. All the utility companies have given their written consent as required.
Move the ordinance be passed and approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Ed Denise?
Hal?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Move the merge clause be adopted.
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Flores?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry six zero. Which brings us to.
Item 15?
Item 15, which is an ordinance annexing certain lands pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated Section 14-40-501 at SEC. And that is the island annexation that we had the public hearing on earlier.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'll move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further comments or questions, and I'll give the audience one more opportunity too. I feel like we need to, but anything else from the council right now? I'll open it back up, just because I want, in case you have something more you'd like to say that hasn't been said, I want to give you that opportunity.
Number 14, Jason Wyman, again, I would, a couple of things I see. Number one, have you guys driven down Butterfield Coach Road lately?
I drive down it quite often.
Yeah, it's, it's completely torn up from all the dump trucks that run up and down it.
Yeah.
So I think that's another thing you guys need to consider if you're gonna take this on, because I'm telling you, that road is destroyed.
Right.
Another thing, how much is, you said it was gonna be four mils? We never did really get a number on what four mils was.
They usually figure that, Wyman, you usually see a figure in the paper, how much a mil is per $100,000 home, so you kind of figure, of course, most of that millage, of course, most of your property taxes go to the school district, which won't change.
Right.
But you will take on the city portion. About forty thou, forty, forty dollars. Forty dollars. Annually, forty dollars per hundred thousand dollar value in your home.
And.
That'd be your annual increase.
Okay. And another concern would be, you know, you, you guys can't tell us what the, what the water and sewer department wants to do. And I, I take real issue with that because I'm pretty sure they want to run about halfway between the center line and Butterfield Coach.
But you're in the, you're in the, if, if you're in the Springdale Water Service Boundary. But you're in the, you're in the, if, if you're in the Springdale Water Service Boundary?
I don't believe I am.
You're, you're going to have to deal with that either way.
I'm not in the wa-, I'm not, I'm on Fayetteville Water.
Okay.
And sure.
Then, as I said earlier, I don't know how that's going to shake out as far as different ser-, you may, you may stay in the Fayetteville Water Service Boundary.
Well, but I mean, I think that would be something that, you know, the resident ought to be able to know before you vote on it is if, because if I, I got a real problem with Springdale running water across my property when I have water, because I know
Right.
that there's a piece of property on there that does not have water.
Springdale's the same as Fayetteville in that they have the ability to condemn if they have to, to run, to get service where they need to. I don't, I'm not saying they would do that or that they'd even need to do that. What I'm saying is this won't change. I don't think, I don't see this as changing anything as far as what Springdale Water or Fayetteville Water may do in the future. That's going to all be, that's all going to hinge on development either way.
Well, what I'm saying is, is, you know, just like my other residents, we, we've got water, but you don't have water to that piece of property. You've got water behind and you've got water on Butterfield Coach, so you're going to have to make a loop.
Well, what I'm saying is, those aren't, those aren't questions we can answer tonight and those are, aren't questions we can, we may be able to answer in a year from now. We don't know.
Okay, so we don't get all the information we want before we're potentially going to be annexed?
You won't get that information, no.
Okay.
Because we don't know the answer to that. Yes, sir.
I think, I think something that we probably know and maybe we forget, if we have septic, our own septic, your water, Springdale Water is, I lived in Springdale, it's pretty high, but it's going to double if, once we get on sewer, isn't that right? Doesn't that water will double when you get on?
Your water, water goes down if you're in the city. The sewer, that's a, I mean, obviously you're not paying for sewer now because you're on septic. And Ernest, are there any requirements when sewer's available for them to hook on to it?
All things being equal, they would be allowed to stay on the septic unless some development occurred. Again, that's driven by development. You, you wouldn't be required just because you got annexed into the city to suddenly hook on to city sewer.
Well, our water was definitely higher in Springdale than it is on Fayetteville. We did pay more for a meter.
I'm going to tell you that Springdale water rates are lower than anybody's around, I think.
Uh, but I know it doubles if you're on Springdale sewer because that's how they get their sewer.
Sewer's different, but you're not
I understand, but you're talking about.
But you're not going to have, you're not going to be forced to get on sewer.
Well, eventually, I think that you mentioned that. But anyhow, it seems to me like our water is very economical compared to Springdale. I lived on Colby, I lived on Langford, I've lived on Southwest End and it's, was higher here. We had pools, but I know we had an off, I mean, when you're on a septic, it's like.
But are you on Springdale Water now?
No, I'm on Fayetteville.
Okay, and I don't know if that'll change. But I know Springdale Water is cheaper than Fayetteville Water.
Okay, I just want the council to know that if we end up getting.
So you might want to try and lobby to get on Springdale Water because it's less than Fayetteville Water. I know their rates are, our rates are lower than theirs.
I don't know. I know that we don't pay the sewer tax because we all have our septic.
Right, and I don't think that'll change.
Okay, so you, you don't think you would enforce sewer out there if that were to pass eventually?
That's why I asked Ernest that question.
It seems like a lot of questions you guys can't answer. I mean, they're not big questions, but they are to us, you know? That's, I'm not, that's not personal, I'm just saying, you know?
You're not going to be forced on to the sewer just because you're being annexed into the city.
Does that not answer your question?
If you have septic.
So five years from now, if the sewer goes out there, we won't have to take it.
You're not going to be forced to?
Okay, no.
Well, water and sewer has, has eminent domain authority, yes.
That's right.
That's not the same as Springdale, that's a separate, that's a separate entity.
And I don't think that, I don't think that changes whether you're in the city of Springdale or not, if you're in their water service boundary. You're in Fayetteville's, it sounds like. And I don't, as I said first thing, I don't know how Springdale and Fayetteville are going to work out. You may stay in the Fayetteville Water Service Boundary because that, just because the city limit lines change, doesn't mean that the water service boundary has to change. We serve, we serve, we took on property in the Fayetteville Water Service Boundary because they couldn't serve it down at the, where the blessing is, down west of Johnson. Originally, that was part of the Fayetteville Water Service Boundary, but we worked with Fayetteville and we took it so that that development could take place. So there are examples of us working, we work with Fayetteville all the time. And whether it stays in Springdale or Fayetteville, I don't know. But I know that right now, you'd pay less if it was in Springdale Water Service Boundary.
We paid 17 bucks a month on a 2,400 square foot of house. That's nothing compared to what we used to. And it's like having, what we have now is like having an off-season meter in Springdale. We don't pay a sewer tax on it and it's, I don't know, maybe that's more economical. But only the other thing I wanted to say real quick, I understand, you can't answer all these and I understand that, but we are paying, you, you talked about the four mil tax, that comes, that's what Springdale's going to get, I don't know why, but they'll get it. Right now, it's much less than that on Nob Hill, which we have, Nob Hill has a substation in Sonora, that's what's serving us on fire protection. And like I said, just so the council will know, the ambulance is about a mile and a half from most of Butterfield Coach, right at, I don't know what that intersection is, but I think it's Joyce and something and it's about a mile and a half.
I can't tell you when it'll happen, but I can tell you that the city's just about to accept a land donation on Hilton Road, just south of the corner of Hilton and Don Tyson Parkway. That will be a future fire station. I can't tell you when it'll happen, but that's the plan.
But the thing about that, sir, is most of that was annexed then when there was nobody living there. I mean, maybe a big piece of property here and there. We're talking about a lot different.
All I'm doing is answering your question about where fire and ambulance is.
I know, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, one more, well then we, we're going to wrap this up.
I just got a couple of questions, my name's Michael Wilson again. On this waste management deal, do we, if, if, we have to get on that or can we stay with what we got?
You have to be on the resident, if you're a resident of Springdale, we have a contract with Waste Management that they serve our residential areas.
Okay, so we have to get on that, okay?
Yes.
And then what about, we're talking about the water lines and stuff, we don't have fire hydrants out there now within, you know, they're pretty close on, on George Anderson Road maybe to some of the lots, but there's not on the south side really, or the east side. Do they have to come and start putting some water hydrants in to, for fire protection or?
Uh, they, let's see, who would, who would be here to answer that? Mike? Uh, they don't have to, but with certain development, if there's a development, then fire protection, meaning water, for fire protection has to be installed. Okay, thank you.
In other words, I've got city water with Fayetteville, would Springdale be the one that has to put the fire hydrants in?
Springdale, Springdale could go in and do water just for fire protection if that stays in the Fayetteville. We've done that out west where Washington County Water, it's in their service boundary, their water service boundary, but we wanted to be able to provide fire protection for developments that go in out there. So we're, Springdale Water went out and installed water or, or installing water, I don't know if that's done, Mike, but they will, they will install water to provide fire protection even though it's in Washington County's, uh, water service boundary. Okay?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I've got a call for the vote. Uh, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores? Fugiruse?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carries five one. Like I said, this won't take effect for 30 days.
Thank you. And the city, Wyman, Colby, we send out regularly anything, kind of a welcome, explaining some of these things that can help our new residents know. Okay, thank you. Item 16, I'm going to turn over to the city attorney.
Thank you. This is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a lien for the raising and removal of a structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 1205 Crutcher, Springdale, Arkansas, in a clearing where, let's see, this is to cover our costs for the raising and removal of 1205 Crutcher, $7,589.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Got a motion, a second to approve. Any other comments or questions on this one? Anybody here to speak to that property? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse? Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carries six zero. Last item is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, in a clearing emergency properties, 2012 Collins and 2010 Bluebird.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted. Second.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause carries six zero.
All right, thank you. Any comments from council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are we still scheduled for Friday, the December 3rd for our budget moves?
We are, and you're, you're getting into my comment, but I assumed you might. Uh, first of all, I want to apologize to the council. We thought we would have the budget ready for you by now. It's not going to be, we don't think it will be finished by tomorrow, by the end of the day. We might have, we might have a, a summary we may be able to send you with the revenue versus expenditures, but we're not going to have the detail for sure until Monday. I know that that's closer to Friday than we wanted it to be. And again, I apologize, I, we've, it's, it's just not come together as quickly as we had hoped. So, but, but you will have it for a few days before we meet on Friday. I know that's not as long as you want it. Of course, after Friday, you'll have a lot better picture of things and, and we can uh,
After Friday?
After Friday.
Which Friday?
Next Friday, a week from Friday, a week from Friday. Uh, I know that Denise and Laura are going to be working on, on this Friday.